So we're going to get started and call this special joint meeting of the Carson City School District Board of Trustees and Carson City Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And what we'd like to do is start out with the flag salute that Mayor Crowell will lead.
Would you please stand and join me?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
We'll start off, item number two, adoption of the agenda as submitted. Let's see, oh, go ahead.
No, I move that we adopt the agenda unless, if you want to motion that effect. If you don't, we'll just take it. What do you want to do?
Sounds good to me.
So moved.
So moved. Adoption of the agenda, we are good there. And just a note that we do reserve...
I think you need a second.
Should we, should we vote?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, let's make it, let's make it formal. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All right, I hear a second. Any discussion? Any comments from the audience? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is adopted. I just wanted to make a note that we do reserve the right to move things out of order. I haven't heard any, any requests to do so, so we'll, we'll plug along. At this time, we'll do some opening remarks, and I guess I'll start. First of all, I just wanted to thank everybody for showing up tonight. This is our, if I can count, I believe, our third meeting in recent history of the, the joint meeting, and it is a pleasure to be here with the Board of Supervisors and the Mayor and everybody on the school board, as well as Mr. Stokes and the executive staff. So thank you, everybody, for coming. I think these meetings are important, we said it before. It brings our community together, kind of lets everybody know what we're trying to do and how we are working together. Bigger communities, it's, it's hard to work together, and I think Carson City is a nice size, and it's one of the reasons we moved here almost 20 years ago, was it's a nice community, and, you know, people do work together, people know each other, and, you know, this is an example of that, and I'm, I am proud to be a part of it, so, you know, I appreciate everybody coming. What I wanted to quickly do is just kind of quickly recap some of what we've been doing, and we'll talk about some of the stuff tonight, but as a school board, we have been pretty busy. It's, you know, it's interesting trying to do what we feel is right for the students, and sometimes I think in the mix of it, you know, when, when things are getting busy and you're getting tired, at all levels, you try to remember why you're doing what you do. You know, and everybody up here is, you know, works hard to do what we can do, and we've done some good things. You know, we have, a few months back, we had a healthcare day at the high school where members of the community could come together, get medical and dental help in most cases that they needed. We have the health clinic over by Gleason, behind Gleason, actually, where, where children of the community can come in and, you know, see a physician and, and get attended to as needed there. We've been working really hard with our community partners. You know, we've had a lot of folks in the professional community and just private people that have been coming together and finding ways to connect with the students beyond the classroom. And that's been real exciting. We have community PLC meetings where we're exchanging ideas and getting everybody together, and then actually sometimes coming into the schools, other times sending the kids, excuse me, out and letting them know, again, what's, you know, why are we going to school, you know, what resources are out there for these kids, and let them know that they're not in this alone. You know, we're all here, the community's here to help these kids out. We have our Carson City School District Foundation that's helping to raise money for the district and, you know, specifically trying to get some money into the classroom for these teachers who are doing a, you know, a whole lot for our students. So there's, there's opportunities for the district as well as the classrooms, and we want to thank the folks in the foundation for, you know, for stepping up and bringing that back to life, if you will. We're going to hear tonight about the Race to the Top Grant. You know, that's been instrumental in, in aligning with our strategic plan and, you know, making sure that we're on the right track with these kids, and we, we're not just trying to help these kids out, but we have a focused agenda, and we have specifics on what we're trying to do for them. And we think we've made some good headway, and I think you'll hear some of that tonight. Well, also tonight, we'll hear about COPS in the Schools. That's kind of exciting for us. It's, again, that's a joint venture with the, the city and the school district that we're excited to be a part of. And again, all this aligns with our strategic plan, and with that, I think I'll, I've already talked enough, I'm getting thirsty, so I'll, I'll just again thank everybody for being here, and turn it over to Mayor Crowell.
Well, thanks, Mr. President. This is the third meeting of this joint board. It's the third meeting of our Board of Supervisors today. And, you know, it occurred to me, you know, when I was talking to Joe before the meeting, you know, we're all a little tired, you know, we've been in this room for, you know, almost 12 hours now, but it is, it is critically important that we do these meetings. And so I know that every one of our board members is up to the task, wants to participate in this, is interested in it, because this is what makes Carson City a great community. The key word for communities is not just a sense of community, but a sustainable community. And you don't get a sustainable community unless you've got a healthy school system, education system, and you've got a healthy board that provides an infrastructure for businesses and people to succeed. And that's kind of what's going on here tonight, is to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we are. And I'm going to say, you're going to hear me probably talk a little bit about this next week, but there was an article in the Reno paper about Nevada being 50th in the, you know, now we're 50th in the, in the United States in education. I'm not certain, I know all the nuances about how that number, you know, how we got there, or what it means, or whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but I'm here to tell everybody in this community that that doesn't apply to Carson City School District, and it doesn't apply to the Carson City Board of Supervisors and what we're doing here. I mean, I think we're the only school district and the only Board of Supervisors, at least in this state, that meet jointly to make sure that we're on the same track strategically. I think we're the only school district I know of, at least in northern Nevada, where every kid, every student has a laptop. Unbelievable, every student. And of course, we're the only one in the, in the country that got the Race to the Top Grant. And you don't get that by being 50th in the country. You get that by having a forward-looking school board and a forward-looking community where everyone is engaged in the education of your, of your students, everyone is committed to making sure that your community is sustainable, moving forward, and that's what you in this room and everybody in this community does and do very well. So thanks for letting me have a couple words. You'll hear more about that, I think, next time. Okay, go.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you can have the gavel all day.
No, and, and that's a good point. You know, my, I kind of jokingly said the other night at a school board meeting, off the record, that the kids hear this too, when they hear we're ranked 50th in the nation. You know, and some of these kids graduate from school and go to college, and they're nervous about that, how are they going to do in college and whatnot? And I just wanted to say I'm happy to report that the vast survey I took, which was about seven kids, you know, they're all in college, I spoke to them, they're all thriving, you know, some are going, you know, they're, some are at UNR, some are in Idaho, some are in Washington and other places, and all these kids are achieving, they're doing very well. There are a couple of them on the dean's list, you know, and their report back to me was, we did get a good education, and they were prepared for college, and, and for me, that was really gratifying. So with that, we are going to move to item four, which is a public comment. If anybody has an item they'd like to bring up that isn't on the agenda, this is the time to do so. We, as a board, we can't, we can't vote on it or anything, you know, we can have some discussion, but I just want to make people aware that, you know, you are welcome to come up. And with that, do we, do we have any public comment? Oh, I thought we did, we don't. Okay, so we're going to move along then to item five, recognition of Carson City Fire Department staff for services to Carson High School Health Occupation Students of America, HOSA, EMT and EMS certifications. Frank Sacalaris is coming up to speak to us, and again, this is for discussion only.
First off, thank you for allowing me to speak, Superintendent Stokes, Mayor Crowell, and members of the board. My name is Frank Sacalaris, and I am the HOSA Future Health Professional Club Advisor at Carson High School. I've been the advisor now for four years. I also teach health science, sports medicine, REMR, which is our first responder class, and RMT class. In HOSA at Carson High School, we have over 300 students enrolled in our program, which is about 12% of our entire school population. We are the biggest program in the state at this point. That includes even the technical academies that are down in the Clark County School District. We have more students enrolled in our programs than the Clark County School District academies do. Last year, we started a first responder EMT program at Carson High School with the partnership of the Carson City Fire Department. Tonight, I wanted to recognize some of those individuals that helped in that, so start that program. We were, we are very thankful with past Chief Giomi, who helped bring this to, to us and to Ms. Lewis, as we were writing the grant, and we had asked for their help. He was very supportive in this program. In the transition from Chief Giomi to Chief Shrihands, Chief Shrihands was also very willing to help, help in our program and allow his, his crew to be able to come to our high school and teach. Last year, we had 15 students in the class, in the EMT class. This year, we have 22, two of which are with me today, and we'll talk in a second about their experience. Jeff Davies, who is also here with us tonight, set up the class, put the schedule together, because you have to be in EMT in order to teach the class. Last year, I was not in EMT, so I took the class with our students, or 15 students, and let me tell you, it was a very good experience. One for them, two for myself, to remember what it's like to be back at school again and have to study and do all those things. And I can say that without Mr. Davies' help, this class would not have taken off, and we would not be where we are today. We're thankful for the time and effort that Jeff has put in, above and beyond his normal duties as a Carson City fireman, and along with, with his fellow paramedics and firefighters, of giving their time and coming to us to teach our students in our community how to be EMTs and first responders, which then, in the future, will allow them to go out, get jobs, and hopefully in our community, and any place else in the healthcare profession. So with that, I'd like to thank now Chief Shrihands for his help, Jeff Davies, the other firefighters and paramedics that came and helped start our class last year, Austin Stowe, Kevin Nyberg, Alex Hughes, Curtis Baker, John Pedrini, and Matt Merritt. And with that, I'll have Rosie Batista and Italo De Silva say a little bit about their experience in our program.
So hello, good, good evening. My name is Rosie Batista, and I am a senior at Carson High School. I am the treasurer for HOSA, and I am part of the EMT class. My experience with this class is very welcoming experience, since this is a profession I would like to follow, and seeing Davies and Pedrini and Curtis and, oh, Mr. Baker, or Baker, they're very like welcoming, and they're very like, they're a mentor to us. They don't teach us as a teacher, they teach us as a, someone who wants us to see us succeed. And I really like that, since that's the best way to, for one, as a student, to learn, since that always gives us the best experience. I'd just like to thank them for their time, which their schedule is pretty hectic, so they make room for us, which is great, so thank you. And Italo?
Hello, I'm Italo De Silva, I'm a junior at Carson High, and I'm the HOSA reporter, one of them, there's two. So basically, I'm in the EMR program, so I'm a year behind, just because I'm a junior, you have to be a senior to take that class. Either way, we still sit in the same room, we still sit with the EMT students, and we get the same exact experience, so I think it's actually kind of better in a way, just because we have an extra year of learning the same exact things. So it gets us a lot more prepared. We're doing a lot, a whole year of just learning EMT, so being in the EMR class really helps. And back to what Rosie was saying about all the different teachers that we have, they're not really teachers, they're mentors. And since there's not just one of them like Jeff Davies, there's still Pedrini and Curtis, every other one of them brings their own, like, set of skills to the table. Curtis has his own weird way of making us all laugh and getting us engaged, and then Pedrini's really like straightforward, he gets, he gets a lot of the information conveyed in a certain way, and then Jeff Davies is just like the classic guy. So it all comes out really good. I don't know if that was the right thing to say, but yeah. And even though we go through a lot of, like, bookwork, it still doesn't feel like bookwork. It feels like it's all hands-on activities, because we're all talking about it. We go through one section, and then we talk about it, and we make sure that we clearly know all the information, so I feel like it's a really amazing class. Thanks.
I would also like to add that with the partnership with Carson City Fire Department, it's also allowed us, and we will be doing this again this year, to have some off-time, off-campus lab time on, over the weekends. We'll be having a, an auto extrication day, I believe on August, or, sorry, on April 2nd, where CareFlight actually comes in, we get a, a car, we put someone, usually a mannequin in it, and we teach the kids how to cut them out, so they get that true life experience, put them onto CareFlight. You are all welcome to come and watch that and, and see that experience that the kids go through. We will also do, do a lab day April 16th, where we will do movement of, of individuals from one location to another. Also with this class, it's something to be aware of, is that the students at the high school, we talk about career, college readiness, and meeting our strategic plan, the kids in this EMT program, the EMT class at WUNC is a seven and a half credit class. We are teaching the same exact class at Carson High School to our seniors that the students at WUNC are getting. The EMR class, the first responder class, is a four-credit class at WUNC. So those students are in, in actuality, getting a four-credit class if they were students at WUNC. So we are doing, what I believe, are doing a very good job of giving these students an experience, a college experience at the high school level that they could not get someplace else. I'd like to bring Jeff up and have him say a few words as well.
Hi, I'm Jeff Davies. I saw Lori and Karen make a little comment about the auto extrication, because I was with them when they went through the same thing. And we, we beat them up a little bit, which was, which was pretty entertaining on my side, because this is what we do for a living, and it's normal for us, and it's not normal for the general public to see this. These high school students in this class, I bring real-life experiences to them, and it's amazing to watch them, and it's, it's hard. Frank and I have a little age gap thing, we talk about, we throw things out, and I look at him, he looks at me, I go, they don't get it, he goes, no, they don't get it. So I got to bring it back down. And, but it's, it's been very rewarding for us, also, myself and the other guys that are helping out in this class, to see these kids, to watch them throughout the whole year, and finally, the end of this class is not just a high school class, they actually have to take a national registry test. So we bring it through a national registry skills testing scenarios, which is eight scenarios, it takes all day to go through those, then they have to go take the national registry written test. So that's the full successful passing of this program, and they do come out of this, if they pass those things with an EMT certification, that's from the state of Nevada. So this is a state of Nevada-approved class. So they have something that they can go and actually, in theory, get a job right from the day they get that card. So some make it, some don't, it's a lot of information. Last year, when we started this program, it was just an EMT class. This year, we formulated the EMR class, which Italo was in, which basically gives them a head start, a little stepping stone, so then by the next year, they either choose to go on, because they saw what it was, and realize maybe it was too much for them, or they got a bunch of information and realize, yeah, this is what I want to do, and they move on with it. So it's a great little program, it's, it's really great for the kids, and it's really good for myself, too. It's a, it's a fun environment, we have a good time, we laugh, we joke, it's not your normal class, there's some gore, some guts, some blood stuff thrown in there, and, but it's what we see, and, and we're not sugarcoating any of it, they have to realize what the world's like out there, so. And I want to thank both these, these are two really good students in the class, they're all really good students, but, but Rosie's actually one of the best, she has all the right answers, so. It says here, it's HOSA, Future Health Professionals Presented to Jeff Davies, 2014/15. Thank you for support of the Carson High School EMT program. Thank you very much, Rosie, thank you. Italo, thank you very much. Frank, thanks for letting me be part of this.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, I appreciate you coming here. Frank, and, you know, I've known Frank for a few years, because my son went through the program, and I just wanted to add, this EMT training is really good training. My son now is a second year in college, and some of, he's pursuing a career in the health field, and what he's finding out is, some of your, they say you need volunteer hours, some need to be paid, and he's looking at pursuing an EMT training so that he can maybe, you know, get some, get some paid hours, if you will, contact hours, and so the fact that you're getting to do this early in high school, what a tremendous opportunity. So I think that's fantastic. But again, Frank, thanks for running a fantastic program. I know you, you have people helping you out doing it, but, but you're instrumental in the program, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments from, from the boards?
So you indicated that it was the same course as the college, so is this one, we're going to get dual credits, that the students will actually get college credits if they have to pass the national certification? Right? They got to do a certificate and pass.
We're working, I'm sorry, Michelle Lewis.
Come to the... I learned to look for help.
We are currently working with WNC to ensure that we have an articulation agreement in place which will allow our students to earn college credit if they pass the state CTE Technical Assessment, CTE is Career and Technical Education, and they pass the state Workplace Readiness Skills Examination, and they have a 3.0 GPA in that sequence of courses, because the sequence of courses for EMT is, it's a whole four-year sequence. So they start either when they're freshmen or sophomores, if they start when they're sophomores, it's a three-year sequence for them. So by the time they are a senior, they have a good foundation of health science in the medical field under their belts.
Okay. Ms. Lewis, could I have you just state your name on the record, please?
Sure.
On the mic, thank you.
Michelle Lewis, Carson High School, Career and Technical Education.
Great, thank you. Any, any other comments? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate you guys being here. And before we move on to the next topic, I just wanted to make sure if we have any public comment related to this topic. If not, we're going to move on to item number six. It'll be informational update on the COPS in the Schools program in the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only, and Sheriff Furlong will start us off.
It was the health board. For the record, Sheriff Furlong, from the Carson City Sheriff's Office, it's a pleasure to meet with all of you. Mr. Mayor, I've always wanted to say this, Mr. President. And, and right from the get-go, I want to apologize, this, this process, as I got to tell both of you separate, went very, very fast and, and a little bit unexpected, and so this is the first chance we've had for all of us to get together. So tonight is, is about giving you a little bit of an update as a joint group and making some introductions to you. The goal of this grant is a community-oriented policing grant that is intended to safeguard our schools. Our, as we've, as we have applied for it, our goals were to keep the students in their living and learning environments, reduce the number of incidents that cause juvenile arrests in our community, work closely with juvenile services to reduce recidivism, and to be, to provide a strong presence in our schools. This has worked well from, from the kickoff. We, we did kick off in, on December 11th, and creating a subdivision of, off of our patrol division, led by Captain Melvin, who's here with us tonight. I do want to introduce, for this moment, the officers that are currently working on this program, and I, and the first one probably doesn't even need an introduction, I think everybody in town knows, Ms. Deputy Lisa Davis, standing right here, Deputy Dean Williams, assigned to the Carson High School. Deputy Jessica Chernowski, who's now working side by side, some of the people who used to babysit her as a child, is that right? And Deputy Matt Putzer. Jessica and Matt are both assigned to our middle school environments, and I will touch briefly on that. As, as we are progressing, we have here also Sergeant Darren Sloan, who is overseeing much of the, the coordination processes, the scheduling, and, and making sure that we're keeping and going in the right direction. As I did say, we kicked off on December 11th. Shortly after that, several of us met with many, many of our statewide partners down in Las Vegas to discuss the, the SRO program, if you will, that is being, that is standing up statewide. What we found is that there are actually three different types of programs out there. Obviously, most people know that Clark County and Washoe County have a school district police agencies. Many counties, as we were doing in the past, have an officer, if available, assigned to the schools, and then the third style of format is what we've entered into here in Carson City, and that's a full-blown school resource officer program. Down at that meeting, what was identified was a true need for standards and practices for our officers that are working in the school environment, to be qualified to work in those school environments, and that's one of Sergeant Sloan's main agendas right now, is to pursue that avenue. And that, that is working, or ongoing. Also down in Las Vegas was the Nevada Peace Officers and Standards and Training Representation, so that we can ensure that those qualifications are standard throughout the state. That will probably be a, a long-range project, as well as the National Association of School Resource Officers Representation. And, and I will note for you, while I don't have, Darren can probably give me the date, it has gone out statewide just in the last day or so. The next... The next meeting with the National Association is going to be here in Carson City, and we are going to begin that process most expeditiously. In January this month, we stood up an advisory board, and this is very important to all of you here tonight. That advisory board was designed to provide an advisory element to this program called Community-Oriented Policing. And so they were very select, we were very selective as to how we were going to accomplish that. Assistant Sheriff Ken Sandage, off to my left right here, leads up the board. From Juvenile Services, obviously, we want very active participation. Ally Banister sits with us. From the Ronwood Resource Center, one of our strongest advocates here in Carson City as a family resource opportunity, Joyce Buckingham from the school district. And Wiswell sits on our advisory committee. Did I say Joyce?
I thought you didn't.
I did say Joyce, right? Joyce?
You said Joyce.
I said Joyce, Joyce Buckingham. We do have Joyce in the back. And I think that this next one, although she doesn't require a whole lot of introduction either, just like Ms. Lisa Davis, Ms. Kathy Bartos is in the back. And we believe very, very strongly that Partnership Carson City fills a very active component when we talk about a community partner. And Partnership Carson City was probably the one and only name that hit the board and has stayed solid since then. And I will say this about the grant, because this is about as far as I will go with the grant, because we're very, very early on. Ms. Kathy Heath, she is the Chief Financial Services Officer for the sheriff's office. She is doing all of the fiscal reporting for the grant, working very closely with the school district. Programmatic reporting for the grant has been assigned over to Sergeant Darren Sloan. He is monitoring that activity as well. This is moving, it's moving very, very quickly. And as of last week, and I'm gonna kind of pass this off over here to Assistant Sheriff Sandage, the advisory board did meet, and the purpose of that meeting last week was to define what is, what are we doing? What is our role here? And so I'm gonna just kind of pass this off, this was drafted up following the meeting by Kathy Bartos, and Sandage just received this, oh, a day or so ago.
Yeah, thank you, Ken Sandage, Carson City Sheriff's Office. I'd just like to tell everybody that I'm very, very excited to be part of this development, to have cops in schools. And I think it cannot be lifted off the ground quick enough, soon enough, by identifying the best people, the right people, for the right job, in which we did by nominating and selecting those three individuals that are seated behind me that will be heavily present in our schools. Followed by relentless, ongoing supervision and leadership by Sergeant Sloan and Captain Melvin. When we started developing how we want to build an organizational control of cops in schools, we identified Partnership Carson City, Ron Wood, the school district, and juvenile probation, as the sheriff mentioned earlier. And then we wanted to identify initiatives and measures and goals and objectives that everybody will have a complete buy-in to involve and engage the students, to be a community leader, a mentor, a friend, a protector. That's our goal. And by having the resources available to us, and the purpose and the buy-in from all the community members to help these folks, these kids, to reach their objectives and their goals, that's why we're here today.
So with that being said, I do want to provide you with this information as kind of designed out from, and it's a little bit in draft, but it's more firm than draft. The mission of the SRO Advisory Board is to provide support to the SRO project in identifying and preventing and reducing, I've gotta go with the glasses again. pervasive risk factors negatively impacting safety and school attendance of the school learning environment. The board responsibilities as defined are that the SRO board will meet regularly with the SRO team to include their day-to-day perceptions and experiences in ongoing program planning and assessment. Secondly, the SRO board will assist with the identification of community-based resources, services, and opportunities for students and their families identified by the SROs as needed intervening services. Third, the SRO board will assist with the identification of resources and training opportunities for the SRO officers. Fourth, the SRO board will assist with the collection of data for the use in program progress and outcome evaluation, potentially revealing critical risk factors that must be addressed in the community at large, as well as revealing successful strategies in the meeting of the goals of the entire project. I believe that this board is doing an excellent job of defining themselves, setting the table, and understanding where we're headed down the road. With that, Mr. Stokes has set up a meeting that is coming up next week.
Thank you, Sheriff Furlong. Richard Stokes, Superintendent of Schools, for the record. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the trustees, and members of our supervisors. I'd like to say that it's really amazing for me to live in a community where we have the skill set that's available to not only me as an individual citizen, but also to our students and staff at our schools. I'm hopeful that these really quality individuals are having a good time with their jobs. Being in schools and being associated with school-aged children and their family members, you know, anything can happen. And for the most part, all that happens is really good. And so again, I'm really just pleased that we have folks of this caliber working side-by-side with our staff. Sheriff Furlong and I have talked about the need for us to make sure that we continue close collaboration on this project. We have, of course, school people on one side who think one way, we have law enforcement on another side who have their specific training and thinking. And we want this really to work well. We want our citizens, our students, our staff to feel safe while they're at school. We want them to know, as is one of Sheriff Furlong's goals, that they have friends in uniform, and those folks are there to help them. So we are anxious to begin this operation of sharing information. We want to make sure that the folks who are the school resource officers know what to expect out of the schools and vice versa. And by meeting and talking like we are here, there's a great scenario for us to be successful. And so that's our goal, and we thank you for your support.
Again, Sheriff Furlong, so where we're headed, the initial focus right now, as far as the sheriff's office is on track, we have to really hone in on that training, making sure that our officers understand their roles in the schools, understand the protection of informations that is privy to the school district, and that the school district understand those things that we do on the law enforcement side. Next week, on next Thursday, I believe it is, we'll be having a roundtable with the administrators of the schools. It's gonna be pretty much a free-for-all. And it needs to be, because we need to be able to understand where each other's toes are at, so that we can be respectful on each other's properties and with each other's roles and responsibilities. Along that path, we have a meeting coming up in February, the first week in February, where the cops organization will hold a meeting with us and give us advice and direction on how to make this program the best program in the state. So with that, I do welcome all of the officers, and I do want to thank them publicly. They've been kind of let loose to do as they're, as they can for right now. Obviously, we've just been up just over a month. But I'll tell you, this is the feedback I'm getting. I go from place to place in Carson and think, okay, I've got a great idea, and I'm met with, hey, your deputy's already been here. Okay? They're already doing that. They're already stepping up that traffic enforcement in the school zones. They're already over there at the Boys and Girls Club. They're already making the contacts that we hoped that this program will continue permanently, that will enhance our children's educational environment and their opportunities in their lives. So with that, I will, the three of us are here to answer any questions that you might have.
We can open it up, does anybody want to start off with a question?
Well, go ahead.
Just a question, you mentioned the officers at the high school and the middle school. How are the officers being assigned to the six elementary schools?
Obviously, this is a program that is adjusting as we go. Originally, when I spoke with the two boards, I guess I kind of naively went, okay, you have a middle school on the west side, you have a middle school on the east side, so they'll just take care of the schools on the east and the west side. The officers themselves have streamlined that process a little bit better, so that there is more of a handoff. And if you'll recall back at my briefing, Lisa Davis is assigned into our elementary schools, and those kids that you would think are gonna go from that elementary school to that middle school, that's how their assignment, they're matching up, and I believe that, I'm getting the nod, so that must be correct. We hope that the children are exposed to those officers before they go to the next level of school.
Sheriff, you opened this with saying that we're doing this to safeguard our students. But as you explained, it's more than just safeguarding our students, because if we do that, we're safeguarding our community because of that relationship. And I can't thank you enough. When you mentioned Lisa Davis, you know my feeling about her, she's a superstar and has done wonders for the kids in the elementary schools. Now with that, I'd like the three resource, or these three officers now to come up, and I'd just like to ask them a question if I could.
What asked?
We're gonna sit back and watch.
Yeah, just sit right down and make yourself comfortable.
Sorry, red and doughnuts, though.
And I know this is relatively new, but safeguarding our students means having that interaction with the students. Have you found, and each one of you in your respective schools or where you've been, how have the students received you? I mean, has it been a lot of students or just some students? What's your assessment so far?
I can tell you, my Deputy Jessica Chernowski. My very first day, I had a girl, it made my whole day, didn't know her, never met her before, and she just came up out of nowhere and gave me a hug. And that warmed my heart, and it made me feel like I was definitely in the right place. Got a little bit of negative feedback, but the kids, my last name is obviously very long, so they call me Deputy Jessica. So all throughout the schools, I'm hearing, hi Jessica, hi Jessica, hi Jessica, and I love it. I love the kids. Feeling very welcomed, so.
I am Deputy Dean Williams. I don't want to see that, what it'll look like on the camera. I'm at the high school, it's great. They give us each an office at their respective schools. I'm not really an office person, so I hardly go in there. I know how to work the computer, but I'm more like a border collie. I'm all over that school, I like to know all the nooks and crannies, and the kids come up to me. There's some kids that are standoffish, and, oh, look at the cops are here. But if people are uncomfortable upon seeing us, it's usually education, they don't know what we're doing, so we can explore those feelings, hey, what's going on? And they warm up to me when I talk to the other, you can see how people are coming up to me every day and talking to me. There's some favorites that come up, you know, but I'm looking at more of the kids that don't want to talk to me, the suspicious-looking group, I'll go up and just start talking to them. I walk to parking lot, I just try to keep them guessing where I'm at. So so far, I've been getting lots of positive feedback, nothing really negative yet. I mean, there's a couple of kids that'll say really bad words, but they might be troubled, and I'll work on it. And it's might be a cool project to get the ones you think that are going the wrong way, make them come the right way. Maybe those one or two kids will be cops one day, and I made a difference.
Deputy Matt Putzer. I guess the one thing I've seen in being in the schools so far is that students are approaching me as a deputy sheriff more than they are out in the public. So to me, that's rewarding, and hopefully, what starts in the school will carry over out into the streets. So that's the main thing I've seen so far.
Well, and I think that what, just, I want to finish this, I know everybody else has got questions, but it's important. I mean, our goal and our primary objective as school trustees is student achievement and success, and that success in life, you play a vital role now in that success in life factor. And that's why, and I just, one question, do you have any, based upon what you've seen, is there any priorities that you've established for yourself, you know, individually with the students?
I would say, right at this time, safety. Safety to and from, or to school, while they're at school, and when they leave school to walk home or take the bus. My main priority right now, student safety.
I'm just saying with Matt, student safety, make sure I'm in the hallways, make sure the kids know that they're safe getting, you know, to and from class, bullying, try and put a stop to that, and making those kids feel like they can go to school and learn like they're supposed to.
Also, that cops are humans, and we're approachable, we're available to give information, and we really want to help them.
Just, thanks Sheriff Furlong, but just everyone that's involved in this, it's so important. And Kathy, keeping track of where we're going so this program is sustained. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Ron. Did we have any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Deion.
This is just to kind of follow on what Ron asked. So I know you're talking about your interaction with the kids in the hall, but has there been any formal, like assemblies? Have they explained to the kids the program and what, why all of us, especially in the middle schools, especially why you're there now, and what your purpose is and how they interact with you? Or is it just, are you guys kind of left to get, to develop your own relationships and be visible? Or like, what's the formal structure with the kids? Has there been any presentations, or, hey, this is a new program, we're here to help you guys?
I was introduced at the Carson Middle School, that's my assigned school, their assembly right before Christmas. It wasn't formally told, they were told that I was gonna be there all the time, and they see me all the time every time I come in contact with them. I partner up with the deans and Mr. Sadler there at the middle school. So every time we talk to a kid, we explain to them, okay, you're not in trouble, just because she's here, you know, we're a team. We're a team with the administration and the deans. But that's only the kids that we've, I haven't had like a formal kind of introduction with the kids.
Deputy Williams, I found that you're doing this, Deputy Williams, at the high school. There hasn't been like an assembly where I walk out there and they're jeering or cheering, nothing like that, but I did get introduced to the staff at a big staff meeting. And that was fun, and, but no big formal. But I, people come up to me and ask all the time, I walk the halls, and they'll say, come on in, and the teacher will invite me in, and the kids will ask questions. And I kind of feel like, am I in trouble, am I disrupting their class? Because the purpose is to get them in the classroom. But yeah, we have to have a balance, because they want to know why we're there.
So this is my third year, actually, in the schools. Sheriff Furlong actually put two of us in the schools, and we still had to handle patrol calls, so this is actually my third year at Eagle Valley, so all the kids are aware that I'm there for them, so.
I was just gonna say, I don't think you could have chosen three more qualified people to do, I mean, you know, Ken, when we first talked about this, it's part of the success of the program is who you have being the interface with the kids. These folks are top rate, so my hat's off to all three of you. And of course, Lisa Davis, can't say enough about her, and Kathy Heath is watching the finances, I watched that, and staying on top of all that, so, you know, I think it's off to a good start. And I will say that it's not lost on me, you know, sometimes you can see the news about all the things happening in different communities. Sometimes I think, you know, we're not immune to some. Sometimes I think, you know, we're not immune to some stuff, but it'd be interesting to have a camera, just come right in here and see cops, schools, boards, community, community organizations, sitting in a room like this, talking through things about how to, one, protect our community, but two, how to make sure that our kids are going to make the right choices as they go through life, starting off early. And, you know, I don't think you see this very often. Maybe you do, but, you know, we're what, 10 feet away here? This is what, this is what a community is all about, so my hat's off to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, on behalf of both boards, thank you for what you're doing. I think it's important, obviously, the safety of the kids is important, but that interaction that, you know, as we call it, that community partnership, is really important to us. And I think early on, getting these kids, like you said, to realize that police officers are, they're people just like everybody else. It's one profession of any number of professions you could have chosen. And to get these kids to realize that it is a partnership, we're not there looking to get somebody in trouble, we're looking to help them out. And your presence there, I think as time goes on, you know, the kids that are somewhat suspicious or somewhat standoffish will see that and appreciate that. So I just wanted to thank you guys for, guys and women, for being in there. I use that term generically, so my daughters, my daughters get very annoyed at me. And then Sheriff Furlong, I just wanted to, when we talk about partnerships, my wife's a kindergarten teacher, and Sheriff Furlong, along with a number of community members, came into the classroom and read to the kids and interacted with the kids. And starting with these kids early on is fantastic, so I'm glad we're seeing, you know, this type of activity at all levels of the schools. So thank you.
I appreciate it. For the record, Sheriff Furlong, again, I don't want to get in trouble. I will close it down with this. I think that the biggest step forward we have taken, just this, and we'll call it since December, is that commitment of resources, physical security of our schools. We've allowed these officers to be on the campuses, which gives us a labor force that is going to enhance that security. The relationship building with the students, I can tell you that we are building our measures, if you want to call them. And the biggest step forward that I believe that we're making is that real direct attention to the middle school environment. If you were to ask the question, where are the problems from our past? It is the 13- to 14-year-old range, and it is primarily alcohol and drugs. We need these officers to be mentors. We need these officers to be with the kids, not just on the school properties, but at the school events, in the Boys and Girls Club, at our summertime parks and rec activities. These folks will be heavily utilized all year round. So thank you all very, very much.
Good, thank you, thank you again. Anybody from the public in the audience have any, want to come up, have any comments? We do have somebody.
Hi, I'm Sarah Knight, and I'm a sophomore at CHS. And may I just say that he's one of the funniest people I have ever met. He is so good. Like, he'll just pop in class and be like, what's up? And then he'll like walk out, and you're just like, what just happened? And I mean, at first, he was a little standoffish, but then like you see him going around, and you just act super friendly and stuff. And then I also have like a cousin at CMS. Her name is Gillian, I don't know if you guys know her, but she says that she really likes cops around there, because it makes her feel like more like safe and like in with the crowd, you know, instead of being like little cliques, you know? So like, bringing people together, it's a good plan. And then I have a niece in, at Fremont, and she loves the cops. She just goes up and she's like, hi! And it's, and it's so like dear, and near to my heart. So what these people are doing, and I'm a Girl Scout, so salute you guys, and you guys are just so great, like honest, love you, love all you. And so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have anybody else? All right, if not, thank you again, Sheriff Furlong. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the officers in the schools and everybody who's supporting it, so we really appreciate it. Moving along to item seven, informational, oh, no, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry, Alan, I don't know if that was for you. It will be, though. Item seven is the informational update on the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics STEM Summit that was held on December 9th of 2015, and this is for discussion only, and Alan, take it away.
Great. Thank you. For the record, Alan Goslin, Carson City School District, President Cassiopoe, Mayor Kroll, Superintendent Stokes, members of the boards. Thank you for inviting me to be here. I'm excited to share some of the news from the STEM Curriculum Summit. Also, thank you for getting me out here to see the other presentations that are going on. It's heartwarming and inspiring to see the collaboration that's going on and the fruit that's born from the cooperation of the two boards. I think it's a special thing, and it has been a driving force behind the work that's being done in education here in Carson City. I think it was perfect that we started with Frank Saccharis and his presentation on the EMT program, and I loved hearing from the students, because when they spoke, you can see and hear the energy and excitement and the belief in the program in their words. And I think that's true of any CTE program that you have. If you had kids come from horticulture, you had kids come from graphic design, you would hear that same energy. And the excitement, I think, is born from CTE, because there's a clear why. Not only are the teachers clear about what it is they want kids to learn and to be able to do, but inherent to those subjects, there's a clear why. There's an application to the real world, and that really is our goal. It's not only to educate students, but to have them ready for work in the real world. A challenge we have in education is if you were to walk into one of the core classes, perhaps a math class, or an English class, or a social studies class, and you ask the kid about what they're learning, they might be more, they might have a tougher time explaining the why. Why is it that they're learning this? A typical answer might be, because I'm going to be tested on this, whether at the end of a unit, or end of a semester, or even on a state exam. But likely, their answer would not connect to the real world. So a challenge that we face in developing what we call a curriculum that matters is that in our core courses, how can we enhance the why? And we believe that a way we can do that is through partnerships, by making connections and bringing in community partners into our classrooms, and then providing opportunities for our students to experience learning off-campus as well. Mike Jackson spoke at the last joint meeting, and he is a visionary in this respect. It's one thing to have the idea of enhancing that real-world context, it's another thing to have a plan as far as how it can be developed. And he spoke last time about his best program, that's Business and Education: Successful Together. And his vision is that we recruit partners not just to come and make a one-time presentation or to offer their site for a field trip, where it's sort of a one-and-done, but it's actually to develop a relationship between, Mike Jackson, for example, and teachers. And in his case, it's been fifth-grade teachers. Fifth-grade math, fifth-grade teachers at Fritsch have worked with Mike, and since June, he went into their classrooms and has done a couple of lessons carefully aligned with the core math curriculum. I think his first lesson was powers of 10, for example. And you can learn about powers of 10 and how to execute different mathematical tasks in theory without really understanding how it applies. But he brought in the work that he does at Micro Manipulator and monitoring wafer boards and exactly how this power of 10 looks. So seeing the fruits of that labor and the excitement that kids had, we wanted to find a way to duplicate this. We considered cloning Mike Jackson, that's very expensive, and the technology is very rough. So our next idea was, we know we've got fantastic dedicated professionals in our community, and we know we've got fantastic dedicated educators. If we get them in the room together, it can't help but bear fruit. Great things will happen. And so that's what happened on December 9th. We called it the STEM Curriculum Summit. We have been working with the Race to the Top grant, which you'll hear more about from Dr. Bredere, around refining our curriculum, really honing what we call learning targets, what it is we want kids to learn and to know, to be able to do, developing those into units. And so we invited some of our middle school teachers to present, to be available. The idea was like a speed dating. So if we have teachers, and they've got sort of set up like a science fair might be, that every five minutes, you could come and talk to a teacher and find out what it is they're teaching in either their math class, or their science class, or their STEM class, engineering, for example. And then as a partner, as you hear about one or more of the units, you then make a connection that, hey, I use those skills in my job, in my profession. And then hopefully, through conversation, you would find a way to bring that into the classroom. And so we decided to cast a wide net, and we invited, I don't know, 75 people or something like that, hoping, you know, if we can get 20 people, that'd be fantastic. And we also invited the middle school teachers. Well, we ended up getting over 50 partners to show up, and we had 17 teachers volunteer on their own time to come in at, you know, 6 o'clock in the evening after a long day teaching, to come and share. And those are the names that you see on the slide up there. So I think pictures really tell the story. That's what it looked like. The room is packed with representatives from Micro Manipulator, Resource Concepts, Southwest Gas, NDA, Dream of Do in Nevada, Nevada STEM Coalition, Sustainable Nevada, Desert Research Institute, representatives from Western Nevada College, Carson City Library, various agencies from the state as well. It was fact house, and what you can't see, oh, there you can see in the bottom left, people actually had to stand as well. So I learned that trick from Ben Contine, is you always want to have it standing remotely. But in this case, it wasn't orchestrated, it actually happened, so it was very exciting. Mike Jackson gave a presentation which was very inspiring, and President Cassiopoe also gave a presentation as well on his experience. And then we set them loose. So after a brief frame, we set them loose, and this is what it was like. People, our plan was every five minutes, we would give a signal, and you would move on to the next presentation. Well, what we found is when we gave the signal, okay, that's five minutes, move on, is people stayed. They didn't move. And as I reflected on that, we eventually just gave up prompting them to move, because what that told us was that the relationships were developing, that people didn't just want to hear what a teacher was doing and say that you're doing a great job and move on to the next thing, they wanted to find out more. And then they wanted to share back on how that connected to their work. And so the night was a huge success. If you look at these pictures, you can see from the body language, people are leaning in, they're smiling. It was, it was an amazing night. This was a quote that we used to frame the evening, it's coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success. We came together as boards, remember when we, the first meeting, when we had the adoption of the strategic plans. We've stayed together, you've continued to commit to meet, and now we're working together. And again, we're starting to see that fruit in the EMT program, in the Deputy Sheriff's program, where we're making a difference, working together, sharing resources, and it's impacting kids. This is another thing we like to say, is that, you know, don't mistake activity for achievement. How does all of this matter? It matters because we have outcomes. It's not just talk. The strategic plan isn't just a vision, it's actually a roadmap for getting things done. So it's only been a month, it's been about five weeks. In between that was Christmas vacation, and yet, we have some very specific partnerships that are developing out of this, and you can see those there. We're going to be, Joe Cassiopoe is working to integrate engineering concepts through a bridge-building program at the middle school level, and also at Fritsch Elementary, I believe, and you can speak a little bit more to that. We have statisticians coming in to work with our math teachers. And then we have Southwest Gas, Stacy Woodbury from Southwest Gas is putting a team of engineers together to analyze our science and math curriculum and develop ideas for how they can integrate their work into the classroom as well. And I'll speak to that a little bit. The work of Race to the Top is special in one way. Not only do we have a very clear curriculum, but our curriculum is transparent. So because we've used the time and the sub-out days, which was controversial, I know, but what's resulted is we have a very clearly articulated curriculum, very specific, standards-aligned, broken into careful units, and all of that is transparent. Anyone can access it. It's actually available on Carson City School District's website, carsoncityschools.com. And if you're a parent, or you're a partner, you're a supervisor, and you want to know, you know, what's going on in eighth-grade science, you can go on, there's a little icon there that says Race to the Top, and you can click on that, and you can find not only the full year guide for eighth-grade science, for example, but you can find unit by unit, something we call a learning guide. It's not just a syllabus, but it's, it's like a syllabus, but for every unit, very specific. The targets, what kids are going to be learning, and the vocabulary. And so we have a well-articulated curriculum that's transparent and accessible to anybody who wants. And now, we're taking that content and enhancing the context of learning, making that more valuable to students, motivating students, not just in those career courses, which naturally are motivating, but perhaps in those courses that it's a little tougher to make connections, especially for young people to do. So that's the work, I'm very excited. There's actually, last night, we had a GATE advisory board, and the teachers went and presented to the GATE parents. And from that, I was talking with Josh Billings from Carson City School District, and he said, yeah, we're, you know, in my STEM class, we're doing design and manufacturing. I said, Sven Klatt's the guy you, you know, you need to know. And so I forwarded Josh's information to Sven Klatt, and they're going to start a conversation. And so things are really happening. We have tangible outcomes, and it's all very exciting. What you can do to help is, one, familiarize yourself with the curriculum, but if you see a place where you can get involved in those core subjects, math, science, social studies, writing, or you know somebody who might be able to do that, you can contact a teacher directly, you can contact our board members, you can contact me or Michelle Lewis at Carson High School in the career office, and make these things happen. It's very exciting. Questions, comments? Joe, if you can speak to your work that's going to happen?
Yeah, let's open it up to questions first, and then I'll kind of give a quick recap of what I've been doing, but if anyone has any, no, I wasn't ready to say anything yet, so.
So how do lawyers fit into STEM?
So we focused on STEM, because we tend to think of manufacturing and engineering, but our social studies classes would benefit greatly, our government class, for example. Those students, I think, would benefit greatly hearing from lawyers. And, you know, when it's in session, we do field trips and things, but I'm not certain that we take full advantage of the resources that are here. And we're more mindful of it at this point. That's a great question.
Alan, I think that your point about more mindful of it, I think one of the things that we need to recognize, and I know I brought it up a little bit before, but, you know, we're at a particularly choice time with the school district and our community. Not too many years ago, as those people who've been involved know, I think the response from educators, administrators, if you came into the schools from the community and wanted to talk about a shared program, would be, I have enough interruptions, you know, don't pull my students out, don't get in the way of the education, I have too much to do to keep on track. We have been witness to a huge change in attitude within our educational system. My belief is that there's always been people in the community that were willing to support and take part in education, but we weren't always ready, when it came to the schools, to welcome that help in. And I think that we have to compliment Alan and all of the people who've been involved with this program at how, you know, not just welcoming, but they've reached out and are seeking that kind of help and finding a way to work it into the programs. And I just hope that we're in a position to take the most advantage of this as we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Ron?
Let me just share the
Let me just share this with the Board of Supervisors. Alan mentioned Mike Jackson, and he was here. Not only, and I want to observe this in, when he made his presentation at Fritsch, but he didn't stop there. And what Alan said, it's not just a guest lecture, it's a relationship to help kids succeed in life. He took it one step further. He's now having family nights at his business, meaning the students are excited now about decimals, the power of 10. He's inviting the kids to bring the parents to his business, so the kids can show them how, like Alan said, how this is applied. And it's interesting, even in the fifth grade, when the kids went, after Mike Jackson gave his presentation, and took him through what, what actually happens in his business, one kid raised his hand and says, how old do you have to be to go to work in your business? We now know about decimals, now we can go to work. But it was just that idea, that that interest that applied, how it applied, it was not, like Alan said, just to take a test, there's a reason for it. And this is what's happening with one community partner after the other. So I just wanted to share that, because both board, we're trying, that quality of life is really important, and by working together, they're seeing that. Our community partners are seeing we're working together, everybody wants to join in now, for the kids. Kids are successful, we're all successful. Anyway, just wanted to make that comment.
Good, thank you, Ron. Any other? Karen?
I'd just like to say, this makes me very proud. It's amazing. And I remember when this started, at the middle school, with little groups breaking up as to what we needed. And this has come worlds away from that, it's incredible. So thank you.
Good, Alan, yeah, thank you very much. You know, I'll just, I'll just, since you brought it up, I had a chance to attend and be a part of the STEM Summit, and it was a great experience. It was a packed room, there were a lot, there were more people in there than you could speak with. It was, it was really an impressive gathering of people, not just of professionals, but community members, teachers, and there were even a couple of students I saw that snuck in there. So I mean, there's a lot of interest out there, and I really do think the kids, without sounding corny, are kind of hungry for that interaction. There's still, we talk about the kind of, you know, with the cops, how, you know, you're either a cop or you're not, there's that standoffish. It's the same thing for kids with adults, you know, you might have a kid that wants to be an attorney, or wants to be an engineer, or whatever they want to be, and it's very intimidating for them to reach out and ask those questions. So, you know, bringing it all together, and being there as a resource for the kids, is really invaluable. I was, well, I've been, I've been working with the schools for a long time, I mean, that's how I got involved on the board and everything, but it's just been really rewarding working with the kids over the years, doing a number of things. And most recently, as you mentioned, I'm going to be collaborating with some, some middle school teachers, but just yesterday, the day before, I was in Rhonda Holloway's class, and I get an email from her saying, you know, would you mind coming in and talking to our Lego Robotics students? So I said, sure, I'd be happy to come in and do it. And so once she kind of hooked me, then she said, it'd be great to have somebody, our theme at our oil refineries, and it'd be great to have an expert in the field speak. And I kind of panicked. I said, we don't have a lot of oil refineries here in Carson City. So I don't know what value I can add there, but I did a little research, but it was just coming in and talking to the kids, and, and we spent, you know, 20 minutes talking about oil refineries, they taught me. And then we just talked about engineering in general, and got into bigger conversations about if you want to go to college, if you want to go a career path, how you do that, and, you know, and talking to them about, not just engineering, but, you know, I ask the kids all the time in engineering classes, what do they think you have to know to be an engineer? And they always say math, and science, and all that stuff. And inevitably, they get surprised, and I said, well, you really need to learn how to write, make sure you're a good report writer, letter writer, public speaker. You know, and trying to incorporate all that, and get these kids to know that, whatever career you want to follow, you know, you need a well-rounded education to do it. And that kind of ties in for me, the English, and the social studies, and all that. You need to have a, an understanding of your community and the people in it. And the kids are always very receptive, and so it's been a great opportunity, you know, we've worked, you know, I'm one example, Mike's another example, there's numerous examples, but it's very easy to get involved. If anybody wants to get involved, it's simply an email, you know, if you don't know what to do, contact the principal. They'll distribute your email to everybody, and you will have more to do than you realize. So Alan, thank you very much for, for taking the lead on this. I know before you, Ben Contine was, was, you know, you kind of filled his shoes, and there were big shoes to fill. And it's been really successful, and it takes everybody to do it, so thank you very much.
For the record, Alan Goslin, thank you, President Cassiopoul, and Steve, for your comments, I really appreciate that. You know, it's, as educators, we can say those things, why learning English and math is important, but it's kind of, when it comes from us, it's like hearing it from your mom or your dad, you know, it goes over your head, but there's power in a professional from the field, sharing those words, and that matters. And also, you mentioned, just getting comfortable around adults, and seeing perhaps themselves as an adult. A lot of kids don't really get that opportunity, and so, when you come in and you work with them repeatedly, and you're a person, you're a human being, they begin to see themselves and their potential as professionals, so it's important work, and it's good work.
Good, well, thank you again, very much. If anybody from the audience has, has any comments related to this topic, we'd be happy to hear from you. Not seeing any, we can move on. Alan, again, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Informational update on the Carson City Library's Training Opportunities Provided to Parents and Student Internship Program with the Carson City School District. Again, for discussion only, and we had Sina Lloyd, but...
Well, actually, you don't.
I noticed that.
Yes. I'm sorry to say Sina is ill today, so I am in her place. My name's Diane Baker. I'm at the Carson City Library, and I'm here to give you the update on the partnership that has been ongoing with the schools for several years, and to introduce also one of the newest parts of our partnership. We've already met, we have student interns, Sarah Knight is one of our individuals as an intern. So just to remind you, the Digitarium at the Carson City Library was a grant-funded project that got started as a cooperation with the schools, and specifically to integrate with the 10th grade curriculum with freshmen, to teach digital learning skills, and with digital media, and to work with their freshman PSAs. And what we have, let's see, there we go. You can have a little quick view of the Digitarium on that part, but the Digitarium with its background, has all the digital equipment for them to do their productions, including the Mac Pros, video cameras, projectors, a sound booth, green screen, everything that they need to get going with their PSAs. And the really cool thing is, especially when it's getting near the due date time, the Digitarium really gets packed. I'm going to go forward one, with, well, I guess I'll go back.
Who's that there?
We'll get, we'll get there. This first one does give you a really good view of when things get packed in there, they're working on their productions, they're filming, they're doing some creative consulting amongst each other, using the sound booth. The energy bouncing around in that room, when they are doing these productions, is really great. It's really great to see all the work going in there. So that part is continuing on. One of the other factors that we have going on is parent engagement nights. Those will be starting again next month. And this is an outreach to parents, it's hands-on training for the individuals, the parents, to see the different things that the students have available to them, first and third Tuesdays, 6:00 PM, at the Digitarium. And it's set up, you can see some of the applications that they are introduced to, some things that, as the educators, you guys are used to them, but so the parents do understand Google Drive, Turnitin, Edmodo, some of the other things, the Power School, which, you know, again, definitely use, and Chromebook, which that is, as you were mentioning earlier, what's in the hands of the students throughout the district. Now, as I mentioned, parent engagement nights, and then the latest thing that we have, and you can see you're peeking out there, again, the newest for this school year, we have paid student internships. This is something from the school district. Part of their buy-in with the Digitarium is providing to students with internships to help participate in rolling out the programs, and assisting as peers, the students that come into the Digitarium, to work on their digital media skills. And we have Sarah Knight is with us today, and our other student is Elijah Rosario. So actually, at this time, I would like to bring Sarah up.
Hi, guys, I'm back. I'm Sarah Knight, and I'm one of the interns, as she said, and I'm just going to pull up my little speech that I got going on. It's not, not texting, I swear. Teenagers get a bad rep, but I swear I'm not. And I was hired by Alan Goslin and Molly Walt, in the beginning of around August, and we had to go through very formal interviews, and we had to do resume and cover letters and stuff, which I think really sets students up, because I know a lot of kids applied for it, and I'm so grateful that I got that job, because I love my job, I love my job so much. And it was just such a great experience to go through like an interview and stuff, because I know that we do that in the eighth grade, where they, where you go through the whole interview process, and they have you like make cover letters, and the cute little brochures, and all the other fun stuff. I was just a hoot. And then you go into the real world, and it's kind of the same, but yet it's kind of different, I didn't have to make a brochure, which, thank goodness. And so, just having that experience was really cool, and I'm in like most of these pictures, because I'm a very picture person. And Eli, it means a lot to him too, because I was talking to him last night about it, and he said that he is just extremely grateful, just as much as I am, because to have this experience, for him as a senior, going into the real world, actually getting a job, it's kind of intense. Like, he feels the pressure more than I do, because I'm only a sophomore, I mean, I'm an underclassman, like, what do we know? I know. And so, just having that experience where like, oh, now I have a job, and now I have more responsibilities that I have to do, along with homework, my honors classes, and all the other tech stuff that I have to deal with outside of my job, it's just a life lesson that I don't think you can get anywhere else, but yet you have to support people, like the people who support you, around you, very often, like there are these lovely ladies at the library, who like, if I have a question, like, where's Sina? Like, that was my first question, the first, I was like, where's Sina? And they're like, oh, she's upstairs, and I'm like, where's that? And then they showed me, and it's just such a welcoming place to be, just because I like it a lot, and I like libraries, and I like reading. Nerd. So what I do is, I help students with computer help and homework help, and like I said, I'm an honors student, so I'm kind of smart, I'm pretty much up there. And so, what, now that the senior projects are like rolling out, and like kids are starting to like prepare, and actually having to do the hands-on part of it, instead of the writing and all that other fun stuff, I have to help them get the equipment, how to use the MacBook Pros, because you'd be surprised at how many people don't know how to use MacBook Pro. And I mean, just from like the little, the little things, from saving the iMovie, to actually cutting and clipping the, what are they called? The little clips and the scripts that you film, so, yeah, storyboards, you could do that too. And I advise the students with computer help, so I usually just sit there, and I tell them what to do, I don't do it for them, because that's not learning, along with PSAs. Because with the PSAs, a lot of freshmen struggle, because they're like, oh my goodness, like, this is doing like three months, and I have no idea how to work a computer, or even how to make a storyboard. So Molly took care of all the storyboard stuff, and I helped with having them create it. So with creating it and everything, they got like the full hands-on thing, and I went through the freshman PSAs, and those things are hard, like, I understand like their struggles. So I think it's just really helpful for me and Eli to be in there, that way we can provide the help that the students actually need, in order to be successful with their projects that their teachers are assigning them. And so, even this one girl, like with just basic like core classes, like English, math, science, that kind of stuff, she came up to me, and she's like, I don't know how to do this. And it was just graphing like a function, easy to me, but it was really difficult to her. And so I showed her three different ways to do it, and I just thought, and then the next day, she came back with her test grade, and the pride and joy in her eyes, I swear, it was the cutest thing, and I was just so like, oh, man, so satisfying to know that I could help a student that was in the same grade as I was, but learning different things. Because I think that's what the purpose of us there is to do, is just to help the students, is to help them. Help myself learn, of course, because everyone needs to learn. And so, it's just, it's just a magical little place. Like, that sounds so cheesy, but it's so magical, because I mean, we are provided with the equipment that no other place in the public has. We have the iPads, the MacBooks, the microphones that are really expensive, you'd be surprised. And then there's the projector, the green screens, and the MacBook Pros, those are, I already said that, but those things are powerful tools, I tell you. And so, with just a little bit of help with that kind of stuff, you just really see the students succeed. And I, I personally find that completely reassuring, knowing that I can help someone else succeed while I'm still succeeding myself. So it's helpful to both me and the students, but mostly to the students, but it's also beneficial to me, because I get people skills, like I'm one-on-one with many different people. Even at the parent nights, if we go back just a little bit, I'm that person right there in the cardigan, in the very back, helping a woman go through the process of, okay, my student's doing this, how do I get there? How, like, what is the internet? So you have to like go in, and then you have to like show them, and like, okay, you click here, and then you click here, and the sweetest little lady, she was just in there, and she was just like, I don't know what I'm doing, and I'm like, I got you, it's okay. Like, you're good. And so, she walked out there, and like, we did like a cute little handshake, and it was just so cute. So it's not only just hands-on with like people, but it's hands-on with the technology that I'm around, because it's a very tech place, it's called the Digitarium, did you get it? And so, in there, I have had past experiences with engineering and technical programs over the summer, thanks to GATE and STEM stuff that I've been involved in, and Girl Scouts. So I feel like I was prepared for this job, but some of the things I had no idea how to do, like share a song to iTunes. Who knew you could do that in GarageBand? Who knew? And so, just little things like that, two full things about like how to help the people in the MT1 Room, which is another program we have in the back, with how to like put in logarithms and stuff like that, which is pretty cool. And the freshman PSAs was about three months long, and as she said, it gets completely packed, and so, we have like the 10-minute or less rule, where we spend 10 minutes with each student personally. And all, and what I did is I walked around, helped every single student with their PSAs, and from what I know, and how many kids came back, they all said that they got Bs or higher. And I was just like, that's, that's a win. That's a win for the Digitarium and for the school board, because honestly, that's like, I feel like that's the main goal, like as a student, I think that your guys' main goal for us is to succeed and feel comfortable. So just being in that safe place, because the Digitarium is a safe place, because I mean, there's people like me, there's the adults there, we have supervisors come in, and it's just a place where kids can come after school and hang out, and do their homework, and get stuff done, but yet they can hang out, and just be with their friends, talk, chit-chat, catch up. We have some adults in there, we even had movie nights over winter break, which is when I worked. And the movie nights were a big hit, because we had like 20, 30 people each week, which is a lot of people. And they would come in, and they'd watch movies, and we had like popcorn, and it was just like a fun little setup, and it shows that this place isn't just strictly for learning, it's a safe place to have fun. And I know when people hear libraries, they're like, oh, it's reading, like, like, you know, like Sleep Fest, but then you go into the Digitarium, and you're like, like, mind blown, who knew that we could actually have fun in a library? And I mean, it's not like we're like making a lot of noise, because I do occasionally play music, and the librarians tell the patrons that are in the other part, because we're right by where you enter, they tell them that the quiet place is upstairs, so that we have our own, that the teenagers have their own place, that way they can do what they want, and we can have our own little hangout that you can't get really at school, because school is like, it's like pressure. You feel like, ugh, man, it is, it's a stressful situation to be in school, so like coming to another place where you can do that, and it's just chill, it's, it's pretty cool. And this is going to sound kind of cheesy, but it's not just any hangout spot, like, like I said, it's magical, like you just see students come in, and they go from a piece of paper to a movie. Their storyboard turns into a legit movie, with sound that they wrote, and they spoke themselves, and just seeing the magic in their eyes after they create it, is the most magical thing that I have ever seen. It is so, so... It is so, so, it's just, oh, man. It's one of the feelings, it's like a little kid walking into digital, and like, oh, like, you know, like the big awe moment? I have that awe moment every day, and I could not be more grateful and blessed to have that in my life, because you need a little blessing when you're in high school. And this job has just meant the world to me, like I always say, it's just these past few months, I have realized that the library isn't just like a little place to hang out, but now that I can branch out and tell people about it, in my age, we are having more and more kids come in, and it's just, it's so cool, seeing like how one person can affect more than just like their friends, like, because my friends will tell their friends, and it's like a domino effect. So seeing that actually happen is crazy. It's just so cool. It's just so cool. And I am just so blessed that you guys have incorporated me and Eli into it, because it's just such a blessing to me. It is just a true blessing that you guys have given me and him the opportunity to do something so cool and so out of the ordinary that other kids can't have. Because I mean, most of the teenagers my age, where they work is like McDonald's or the Parks and Rec place. I mean, Parks and Rec is fun and all, but the Digitarium's way cooler. And so, to conclude it, I am just so grateful and very happy. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And if you have any questions, feel free to ask, because I could probably answer them.
Sarah, I don't think you're getting out of this room without Mr. Delphin trying to recruit you as a teacher, so.
I'm open.
No, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Diane, did you have any?
After that? No, I don't think I need to add anything more.
Sorry for the rambling.
No, that's okay. We appreciate it. You know, the library, the Digitarium, it's amazing what a library has become. I mean, everybody up here and in this room remembers when we were in schools, and we had the Dewey Decimal System, so we could find books, we could put them back.
We still have that, too? Don't worry.
Do you still have it?
Don't fret.
Fantastic, and I was nervous.
It still exists.
But, you know, and now to see what it's grown into, this, you know, this media center, and we've seen the PSAs at the movie theaters when we go there, and it's amazing what these kids are doing. It's fantastic.
They're so cool.
So it is, and I mean, I want to thank you and everybody who's in there, and I'm glad you're getting paid.
Thank you.
But we're glad you're in there helping everybody out, because I think it's a nice transition for, like you said, for adults and students especially, who are coming in, they're struggling with things, it's nice to have a peer that they can go to, and you know, it might be less intimidating than going to an adult, and that gets them started and gets them coming back. So I think it's, we've heard great things about the library with the Digitarium, and it seems to just keep growing and getting bigger, so, so thank you.
I really hope you continue it.
If anybody else has any questions?
I was just gonna say, I think you need a class on how to become more outgoing and assertive.
I'm very outspoken.
Just a comment about the parent engagement nights, because I think it's so great that you do that, because you offer it at a time sometimes when our school hours are closed and parents can come in and learn how to use the tools that we're teaching the students. And so, I'm looking forward to maybe getting some flyers in the peaches, and maybe the, I don't know, using the school's telephone call to let the middle school and high school students know that those parent engagement nights are starting back up. I think that'd be great to remind them.
I'll make the flyer for you. I got you. I work with computers all day.
Just one comment, and this again, speaking to the Board of Supervisors, this is where, you know, in working together, what's happened with the public library, with the schools, these great things are happening. And the city manager, Nick Breno, I remember last year, you know, trying to make, you know, budgetarily, trying to make things work, but he did for the benefit of our students. So I think it's something that is important for you, and I think as a school district, we thank you for providing this opportunity for the kids.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And for the record, I really hope that you guys continue this next year, because I'm really looking forward to it.
That's the goal. Yeah. And again, before we move on, if we have any public comment, if anyone would like to come up and say anything? If not, we will move on. Again, thank you very much, Diane and Sarah. Item nine, this is gonna be a tough act to follow, Dr. Perdare, but statistical information on the Race to the Top Grant for Carson City School District. For discussion only, we have Dr. Perdare.
Good evening, Mayor Kroll, President Cassie Apple, members of the board. Yeah, usually I get to go first, and I don't have to go last, where I have to fast-foot it to be able to talk. So I really wanted to, first off, I want to thank the Race to the Top people that had an opportunity to share already today. So I won't repeat what they said, because part of that was gonna be my presentation, but I really want to thank them for the efforts that they're putting forth, and that our teachers are putting forth. So as I present information today, it's really telling their story of the work that they've done collaboratively to change the lives of children in our district. Three and a half years ago, Mrs. Kima, Dr. Medina, and I were invited to an awards ceremony in Washington DC for school districts that received the Race to the Top Grant, and from school districts that didn't quite make it. So sitting at our table was the Boston Public Schools, New York Public Schools, Dade County Public Schools, and Carson City School District. And we're sitting there sharing our stories of our application. And when it got to the end, as you know, we were honored as the top application in the country. And the reason that we were the top application was because they felt that our district's model could be both implemented and replicated, and that's what pushed us to the top of that award. So we're three and a half years later, and they told us, we have a big responsibility in this. Can we do it, and can we replicate it? So we're not done yet, but I can tell you that we can do it, and we have done most of it. And can it be replicated? The answer to that is yes. So we're now beginning to share our information, what we've learned with others, but let's talk a little bit about the story that we have told or been built over this time. See, did that work?
To the right.
Ah, there we go. So as you know, we went through the process of rebuilding our curriculum. So that is building it in terms of the learner. So in other words, every student now that walks into a class at Carson High, or Pioneer High, or Carson Middle or Eagle Valley, when they start a unit of study, they have a learning guide that defines for them what the learning expectations are. There's a common assessment for every class, and now, for the first time, we have a tracking system that tells us not just what their grades are, but what learning targets they've mastered, and which ones they still need to master. And it's done in real time. We're the only district in the country that can do it. So it's not an expensive system, it's one that can be, like I said, replicated, but we are ahead of the game. So our students, when they have their parent-teacher conference, conferences at the middle school in February, are going to sit down with their parents, and are going to teach their parents how to take out the learning guide, how to open our data system, and how to look at their students' performance in terms of mastering learning targets. So now, too, they and their parents in real time can track the progress of their students in terms of what they've learned and how well they've learned it. So it's truly shifting our organization and the work that we do. Learning is different for our students, because the pathway is clear, and they have, every student has an opportunity, doesn't matter their background, it doesn't matter their race, color, creed, so it's a true opportunity to learn and to be successful, and to receive constant feedback. So what's the story for our teachers? So what's different for our teachers is when we have a professional learning community, in other words, all the Algebra I and math teachers get together, they have the same curriculum, they have the same learning targets, they have the same assessments, and the same data. So the conversation is truly about how well are my students doing, what are they learning, what's working well for me, what's working well for you? The playing field is leveled, so it's creating this intrinsic motivation amongst our teacher teams, where they're beginning to work together to really see how they're affecting student learning, and having data to verify it. So it's a shift in their profession. Dr. Delphin made a great comment at the last board meeting, when he said, before we started Race to the Top, we were a group of independent experts, and I'm not gonna say it as well as he did, but in essence, we were independent contractors, we would go in our classroom, we would look at the curriculum, we would select what we were gonna teach, we would tell our story, and we would move on. And in every classroom, it was different. So there was now assurance that every kid had the opportunity to the best education. Now, we're in concert with one another. We're a symphony playing together. So in every group of classrooms, we're now working together to be assured that each student has the opportunity to master those content and those skills. So we're shifting. There are four key areas, as I mentioned before, I'll restate it one more time. Course summary document, so you can log on and see that that's our curriculum for a year. The learning guides are each unit, so it's the syllabus for the unit. Common assessments, every Algebra I has all the same unit assessments and semester assessments, for example, and then a tracking system, keeps everything the same for us. And we have four new data sets that we have developed, that we think are pretty impressive and really affecting our performance. One is the data matrix, and you'll see on the left up there, where we track the pass/fail grades of every student across each campus. So we're able to tell you the percentage of students who have passed 100% of their classes, and our goal is 90% of our students pass 100% of all their classes. And so, right now, our middle schools are about 94% of our students, our high schools a little over 80%, and so that's a significant increase. When we started this project, 1 in 4 of our students was failing at least one or more classes. So it's been a significant improvement. We're not where we want to be, but it's a significant improvement. Table on the top says Mastery Connect Data System. That is, as I just described, where we are tracking individual student progress by learning target in real time. Next one down is, let's go to the one on the bottom, the Graduation Tracker. So now, we have trackers for every one of our high school students, which every semester is updated, and we can lay out the list of every kid and every class that they've completed, and we can sort that instantaneously. So if we want to know, how are ELL students doing towards graduation, just by flicking a button, we can now see what all the ELL students are doing, how many credits they've earned, whether they pass the proficiencies. So it's an instantaneous data set, so that we can provide interventions. And so the last piece, the Intervention Tracker, allows us to track every intervention that every student is receiving, whether there's a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior, so that we can be assured that they're on time for graduation. So we currently have a disappointing graduation rate as a district at 75%, but we also know that that number's gonna change. Because of the data we're collecting early, we're able to intervene early, so we're gonna be able to raise this graduation rate up, and we hope to have it over 90% within the next several years, which is a significant increase. So we're really happy with the way these data systems are working to help us track and intervene for specific students. This is just an overall, and each of you has this PowerPoint, this just shows that progress over time, and you can see where we started and where we're headed. So again, a significant uptake in the number of students earning credits in every one of their classes. Another really strong example is Pioneer High School. As you know, it's an alternative school, and kids traditionally went there either for a smaller school environment, or the fact that they weren't meeting the academic progress. At this time last year, 37% of the students were passing all of their classes. At this time this year, 71% of those students are passing all their classes. So you can see, there's a significant uptake in the number of students earning credits, and that's our greatest barrier for graduation. Our summer school programs in the middle school, it's amazing. Two years ago, there were 80 students that needed summer school to be able to go on to high school. Last year, there were 25 students who needed summer school to go on to high school. Previous years, we had numerous students who were not able to go on. Last year, we had one student who was not able to go on. So of the 500 and so students that we had that were eighth graders, we only had one who didn't meet their academic obligations. So again, great uptake in progress. The other part of our project is the raising of the core class requirements. So we knew that our kids didn't have a high enough curriculum, so Algebra I and Biology became our minimum courses. Last year was our first year to go to Algebra I as the minimum. We went from 72% of our students passing math as freshmen to 88% passing with an increase in the curricular requirements. So again, significant improvement in our expectations and performance of our students. All right. So you know Race to the Top really helped us with the one-to-one project, you heard that before. So now, as we said earlier, grades three through 12, students have a laptop computer, and at the middle school and high school level, that laptop goes home with them. This is really valuable, because it extends the learning time, and we're beginning to change instructional opportunities, so that you have what's called a flipped classroom, is a great example. Oftentimes, teachers can cover information in a class, and then students need additional support. By using the laptops at home, students have access to these curricular opportunities, and can go in and either resee the presentation that they saw at school, or go on and find other free source materials, so that they can continue their learning experience. And I'll just describe, I have, my daughter's in high school now, and I typically don't like to tell stories at home, but this one I'll tell. When she goes home to work on her homework, she's got the phone going, she's got the laptop going, and what's happening is that they're collaborating on their homework. So there's four or five of them working together, they're texting one another, they're sending messages across on the computer, and then they're finishing their homework, and then sending it off to the teacher electronically. And that's their typical mode of doing homework. So it really expands their learning opportunities beyond the walls of a traditional classroom. Next, many of you know the expansion of the Jump Start Program. Mrs. Kima is instrumental, along with our community college partners, in expanding opportunities for kids. And so that's been a big push out of our Race to the Top project and other related programs. So our goal really, in the long run, is to get every student a jump start opportunity, whether that's through advanced placement, or whether that's through the actual jump start experience. We want kids to leave with college credit, every kid to leave with college credit. So our goal is to expand the opportunities for kids and move in that direction. So as we said, we have a responsibility to build a program, not only for the kids of Carson City, but to be able to share that program out, and I think we've had a great start. Are there any questions you have about where we are and what we've accomplished?
Can you tell us how this will be shared out? So you may be reaching out, or there may be school districts that are calling you, but I assume, because of this grant, that there's an overall plan to put this out on a nationwide basis?
So we are working and looking at that. So there's no real network to really do it, but right now, the US Department of Education has asked Springdale School District, and St. Vrain School District, and Carson City School District to collaborate on developing a way to tell this story across the country. And so we're right now working with their, with one of their contractors, to help us build a way to tell this story across the country. In addition, we're presenting tomorrow at the state superintendent's meeting, where we'll be sharing this project with them. And then in a month, we'll also be sharing this with the State Department of Education. There's a national group for all state departments of education, it's meeting in San Diego, and we'll be presenting there as well. And there's other multiple presentation opportunities we're trying to take. So I have a responsibility also to write and share through journals and different parts, that part of it, so we're also working closely with the University of Nevada in developing those things to be sent out.
Yes, Steve, I just wanted to say, just to kind of recap some of what you said, you know, you made the comment that teachers used to call it what you will, island teaching. Everybody was on their own island, teaching what they thought was pertinent. And what I really like now is that collaboration, because not only is it helping the students, but it's helping the parents as well. If a student's struggling, and their teacher isn't available that afternoon for whatever reason, they can go see another teacher and say, I'm having trouble with this, and that teacher's there to help them out. And likewise, you know, behind the scenes, the teachers are able to look at things. You had mentioned a few meetings back. You had mentioned a few meetings back, kind of a, the data that's being entered now, you know, you can look at, they can look at a target or a lesson and see if a certain student's having trouble and not just that, gee, they didn't get question five right, but here's how that question might have been broken up and it can target in on certain areas. And I think that's fantastic. And I, I think to take it a step farther, it, you know, it, it helps a teacher look at, you know, gee, a lot of these kids got something wrong. And it helps a teacher to look at it and say, you know, maybe I didn't present it properly. You know, so it's, it's kind of a team effort, if you will. I mean, the kids are getting help where they're needed, but the teachers are also getting help as well and saying, okay, maybe across the board, none of us are teaching it well or nah, I'm just struggling with it. But, you know, they can collaborate together and, and find an effective way to present the data to folks, so. And then on the, the electronic homework collaboration, I see my daughter doing that as well and I used to get mad at her going, get off the phone. And she's like, no, 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 I'm talking to so-and-so, we're, you know, we're, we are collaborating on this. But as I see now my kids in college, that's what they're doing in college. Everything's electronic. You know, yeah, you turn in some papers, but most of the time, they're typing things up or they're typing it in Word, but then they're exporting some program where they can send it into the teacher for reviewing. So the fact that they're getting this experience now is going to make that jump to higher education, you know, much more attainable for these kids. So it really is a, a fantastic program that we're implementing here. Any questions, Ron?
And I'll just make one, one observation. All of us have talked about or heard about how do we close that achievement gap? And let me put this a little bit in perspective, and Steve and I were talking about this yesterday. Here in Carson City, 60%, close to 60% of our students are on the free or reduced lunch. That's poverty, all right? And in many districts across the country, we all know the school districts, no matter what, what the poverty, poverty level is, probably the top 10 to 15% of the kids are going to be okay. What this has done, it truly has closed that by, like Steve has said, by focusing on each individual student with, with curriculum, there are no surprises. What, what Steve and his team, Dr. Perdare, I, I use the term Dr. Perdare, you know, I use Steve, but what he has done and, and this, this team has done is, is put this together where every one of our kids are going to succeed. It's not a question, will they? They will succeed. But it's, and it can be replicated, and I think that's why nationally this thing will be looked at. But, but what is being done for our students and for this community is just, is just unbelievable. And I, I guess I should include the, the superintendent here who made, you know, had a, you know, he created the environment for all of this, but, but for all of this to happen. And Karen, you missed, you mentioned that, that early meeting in, in the Carson Middle School about four years ago. That, the community made this happen and, and everybody is now working together, but, but it's just phenomenal results that have happened for the benefit of our students and our community. So anyway, just wanted to share that.
I think we ought to have a little delegation go to the editorial board of the Review Journal Gazette and talk a little bit about what's going on here. I think it'd be interesting for people to read that, particularly put in context of what else is being presented. I mean, I, I don't mean to step on other people's toes, but I think that, that, you know, what you've, what you've expressed is really rather exciting and novel and, and people need to know that. Particularly people who are thinking about bringing businesses or families here need to know that. And it doesn't help to have, you know, articles that say, you know, we're the last in the country. So, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, we can, in addition to networking nationally, do a little locally too.
And Bob.
Absolutely. Bob, I think it's an, I think that that's one of the very key points about all this is that, you know, if, if you're a student going to school in Carson City right now, you get opportunity, you, you have opportunities that are unmatched anyplace in the state and probably unmatched throughout most of the country. And that really is something that's, that is worth talking about to people considering living here or the people who are and maybe don't recognize how good they really have it.
Good. Well, with that, Steve, thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's a Race to the Top, you know, it's a, it's an easy topic to talk about, harder topic to understand maybe, but it's a, I guess I'll just say not bad for a district in a state that's ranked 50th, huh? We're doing a good job and I think this shows the good work going on in the district.
And I just want to congratulate everybody for all their hard work because I know how much work this has been. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah. Did we have any comments from the audience? Anybody want to speak on this topic? All right. If not, we are, we are wrapping things up. I just, you know, I again just wanted to say, I, I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, that I had a chance to talk to some kids and they, you know, they inform me on how well they're doing in college and, and how successful they are already. And I think we're just going to keep seeing greater and greater signs of that. You know, these kids are leaving here with, really with an amazing education, not just in the classroom, but you know, when we look at, when we look at Race to the Top, when we look at STEM, when we look at our, our community partners and all the things going on, it, it's hard to keep up with. It's a, it really is amazing. And I think, you know, even the students, they're getting it, they, they see it. It's a, you know, kids are kids and they sometimes, I have a 14-year-old and they pretend they don't, you know, they're, they're not engaging, but they are. You know, you talk to them and they, they get it and they understand these opportunities being presented to them. And the more we can keep, you know, reassuring them by just our presence that we're there for them, I think the greater numbers you're going to see of kids, you know, appreciating and understanding this. So I just wanted to thank everybody tonight. And with that, we'll move on to our last item, which is adjournment. And I'd say, unless anybody has anything they want to present, we're going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good job, Joe. President.
Thanks.
Mr. President.